It's just a little bit past time, so I'm going to be wrong if you'd like to offer water for your behalf.
My gracious, heavenly Father, we are so humbled to come before the best day. We're thankful for the opportunity we have of living in such a beautiful place. We're thankful for the opportunity we have of being counselors for the town of Cartston. We're thankful for all the many blessings that was given us, help us as we are in this meeting, that we may be able to feel the needs of those that we represent and help us that we may see the needs of Cartston and be able to do what's best for this blessed community in which we live in. We're so thankful for all we have. We're so thankful for our families and the support that they give us so that we may be here this night. We're thankful for all we have when we say these things, humbly in the name of Jesus Christ.
But we will bring this meeting to order, so we are the full team of the council meeting. We noticed in the gallery we have Dr. Lowe and James Henline, so welcome. And we have Omeedia, Channel 32. Thank you so much Cory for being there. And we are ready to start, so we have an agenda, we need to adopt it ourselves. Any questions regarding that agenda? Sing on, all in favor? Thank you.
You should know additions, huh?
That's what we noticed, yes. We have a delegation right now, and I don't know who will present, out behalf of the Rotary. Okay, Dr. Lowe, want to come and talk to us? He needs support, so that's James.
All right, you're armed, all right.
I want you to stand beside him for support, so I'll just do what I'm told.
Okay, so we're going to have a little bit of a PowerPoint presentation to try to showcase the idea of the water spray part, okay? And I see Skylar is here, so welcome Skylar. You can join your good pals then, and go ahead.
Thank you for letting us come again. We've come in the past to the previous council. And our purpose for wanting to come again was because there's a new council and so that we're all on the same page of working towards the same goal. You may have heard people talking about this out in the community, both from Rotary and just citizens of the community. So our goal in coming today is to let you know the proposal for the spray part and to get a support letter from the council for our C-FIT application, which is a $200,000 application that we put in for. So we're here to get your support letter for that. We put one in from the previous council, but since the election happened, the C-FIT people contacted us and asked us, can you get an updated support letter with the election that was just had? So, as I mentioned, I'm Justin Lowe, I'm a fourth generation Rotarian. This is James Henline, manages the First Choice Credit Union. Skylar manages Ford and is the leading candidate for the 2037 mayor election in Cartston. Just a quick background, Rotary has a history of doing meaningful projects with the town of Cartston. This was done a couple of years ago, the Rotary Playground at Lyons Park. We did a walking path this last year in partnership with the town and Gordon Atkins. I don't have a picture of that. Prior to that, we helped get the C-FIT grant for the water slides. We helped the theater raise money for their sound system upgrade. We have some annual projects that we do, the parade, the music and speech festival, and the Christmas carol concert. We have a couple of fundraisers that we do. And we highlight that to basically say that we have a good working relationship with the town. And we have another goal, and it's to construct another quality recreational facility in town, one that will be used a lot and that will have low ongoing costs so that the town isn't put under a financial strain from the facility on a year-to-year basis. And just from my personal experience, people talk about this before moving to town. Quality recreational facilities enhance town, and it is a factor when people are deciding to move here. So when we were deciding to move here, my wife said, she's from Southern California, she said, but you guys don't have like a really good playground, there's no spray park, you know, she listed a few things. And so it is something that families go through when deciding places to move to. So we would like to propose the construction of a splash park. Splash parks have become very popular, they're going up in a lot of different places. We've been working with BDI Play Designs, they're the company we worked with for the playground at Lyons Park. And this is the proposed design for our area. It's kind of a three-tiered thing. You have one tier there that has some bigger splash things and a slide for older kids, kind of a medium-aged kid where they can run through a misting thing or a dripping umbrella with a few guns in the middle. And this is a toddler section. This is called a dump station where they just splash in the water, there's nothing splashing in their face. So it's good for kind of kids of all ages. There's just another depiction of it, again on that side. And we worked with BDI on this, and we're quite excited about that design. So in speaking about, we'll just go through some of the logistics. Speaking about water, we looked into just having the water we use go into wastewater. We looked into catching it into underground cisterns and using that to irrigate the area that it will be in. But even then, there was a lot of wastewater, and so really what it comes down to is we need a recirculation system. So basically then there's no wastewater, it's environmentally friendly, and yeah, that's most spray parts that are functioning on a bigger scale are done with recirculation systems. I think a couple of the smaller ones around just do wastewater, but that would be a lot of money in wastewater. So then the question is location. So we went to a lot of different places and talked about a lot of different places in town. And the two it really came down to were town square and then just down directly south of the pool. So we've just put together, yes?
Dr. Lowe, before you go on, can you give me the size of footprint that is needed for this?
So it's a 96 feet by 87 feet kind of area. That's the square area, but as you can see...
96 by what?
86.
86, and that's just the pad itself, right?
So yeah, but that's the square area, but within that there's the cement pad itself. So we actually have a picture. Did that stop work? Go forward.
Champ, can you move that slide forward?
Basically, it fits in between the tennis courts and the ball dive.
Right.
There's a better picture and depiction of it.
Should I be shooting it at a certain place?
I think there's that.
Okay, so this is a depiction of a proposed location that Brandon Jensen kind of drew up with us. So you see the tennis court right there, and here's the existing bathroom. If you put those three circles right there, that would still leave you pretty good distance from the fence there, and you can't even see the fence on the other side there. And then there's still room for seniors and bocce ball quite a bit there because they have a lot of interest in bocce ball in that area as well.
Bocce ball, lawn ball, one of the two, they were concerned about that, so we just made sure.
That's the area that they were looking at, they wanted to have three courts there so they could have tournaments from other communities coming in.
In speaking with Leonard, because Leonard Purnell's a big part of it, and he's in the Rotary Club too, it's kind of, because they also want one by the road, so they don't have to walk so far, because before they were driving in there. So, I mean, at any point, over here's closer to the road and you could still get three, and they're still pretty close to those bathrooms. Basically, we don't think they're mutually exclusive, we think they can both be there.
Coexist?
Yeah.
Can you be more challenging with bocce splash ball?
Yeah.
You can always start a new thing there.
You can do whatever you want to do.
And Rotary is fine to work with them to figure it out, too, that's not an issue, right?
But that's the general area we're looking at. Can you advance that? This won't advance. So just a few pros to the area. Good thing is it's a central town location. Sometimes the pool has been so busy that they actually had to turn people away because there's too many people there. So it would help take some pressure off the pool. It's a heavily used area, so lots of softball tournaments, baseball tournaments. And so while some members of the family are playing in tournaments, others can go and play, and that would increase the usage of the spray park. It's a large open area, which is better for monitoring any type of mischievous behavior, and it's easier to light up. And one of the main things is it's a green area. We can put picnic tables around it and benches, and it becomes a destination spot for the whole family to go. Some can play tennis, some can play softball, some can go on the playground, some can go to the spray park. It's just, it makes it an all-around good area. The biggest con we can think of is danger from baseballs. So on that picture, we showed a portion, see how close it is to the fence there. Randy Russell said they could put up 10-foot fence over that segment. If you're familiar with the Green Monster at Fendway Park, we could have our own little Green Monster. So those portions that are covering the spray park, we can put higher fences. And the way it's designed there, it's designed to be as far away from the fences as possible. So the next...
Can I just ask you something regarding the cons? It appears that in some towns that have spray park, what they find is an issue is broken glass bottle tossed in the midst of the ground. And so that becomes a very high maintenance cost to those municipalities. So I really don't know how we work with that problem. I really don't. I thought of it and I thought whichever location, it will be an issue. The location has no bearing, it's just the notion of vandalism.
We have a couple of slides at the end talking about vandalism. The thing we found most at the playground is to have it well-lit day and night.
Would that work for the neighbors, though?
One other thought, too, if you think about it, if you talk about like a basketball court or like the elementary school, they got a court out there, you can have the same argument with a lot of those areas too, right? And it is an issue, like there could be that kind of stuff, but should it stop a project? I don't know. That would be a heavier discussion.
No, I'm just saying, we all need to be cognizant of the fact, right?
But it's better than gravel, like we've had parks, because then to try to clean up that, impossible, right?
Right, that cement at least.
Yeah.
We could have the same problem with the swimming pools, and we wanted to toss a pump bottle over the fence.
And it's happening, and then you have to drain the whole pool, right?
Just so you're aware, when we had a waiting pool up here on Third Avenue, on the corner of Third Avenue and Second Street, we had glass in there all the time, it wasn't closed in. And what we had to do is we had to just spray it down and then collect the glass along the edge.
Well, I'm sure there is a way to fix it.
And the waiting pool.
I like the idea to come to the public to tell the truth.
I was just going to say, I talked with the people out of Glenwood, they had one out there, and I asked them about that vandalism, and she looked at me shocked, like they don't have that problem out there. They haven't yet anyway, you know?
Well, we won't either then.
It'd be nice if you did.
It's reality though.
But I believe it's better to be proactive and realize that has to be factored in as a maintenance cost.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it is all concrete, there are no rocks? That was a question, because at the soccer field, we weren't smart enough and we put little rocks, and that's the death of us, because it's always on the grass. So all of that is concrete?
All concrete.
Okay, love it.
The other potential location that was discussed as another good option was just directly south of the swimming pool.
How did you do that?
Decided.
Yeah, that seems to be working.
So, the best thing about that is it would be easier to monitor the water quality because it's right close to the pool. Now, when we came before, we quoted that the town square would be $50,000 more expensive because it needed a water recirculation system, whereas down here, we could tie into the pool one. Not entirely sure we can tie into the pool one, and even if we do, there's costs associated with that from what Albert has told us from BDI. So that's not as much of a thing. So we just kind of took it out altogether because there'll be significant cost either way.
About $50.
Yeah, so that's why the $50,000 number isn't here anymore. Some of the cons, we heard there might be other plans for the area. If you look at the area, it's going to require more prep, like it's kind of, whoops, where is it here? It's kind of built up more. Is it harder to landscape around there? It's becoming an increasingly congested area with the pool and the playground, the parking, some people said there's always dust there. Some moms, my wife particularly, says it's too close to Main Street, what if your kid wanders a little bit? And potentially more transient individuals wanting to take a shower down in that area as compared to town square. So, basically, we really, our proposing really is town square. Like, we don't see this other option as a great option.
Open for discussion with that, but that's probably not as important as getting the project going and getting it all finalized, right?
Letting you know what the money is and the costs and that.
So we'll tell you the money and the cost. This is a quote from BDI Play Design. It includes all the equipment and installation. It's $386,787.60. We took off $5,000 because they've quoted if somebody else does the excavation, it takes $5,000 off, and we have someone donating the excavation. So that's the quote. And I don't know if you've seen this, but Ben Court, who's also on our committee, has offered, he offered to pay the 60 cents, and now it says $381,787.
Just get that money, because that would worry. I was like, gosh, you beat me to the punch.
Six pump cans out of council or courts garage.
So that BDI quote is right there. We would need a shed to put the recirculation system and chemicals in, as well as some landscaping after and lighting. We've estimated the shed at $20,000, the landscaping at $5,000, and the lighting, we spoke to...
Leonard Nichols, we talked to him.
And he said it would take a couple thousand to put a pole up, to put a light on there. And then Joe Ripley said he'd do the excavation, and then picnic tables surrounding after. That brings us to a total cost of $470,987.
Have you talked to Randy about operational costs after it's in? What's it going to cost every year?
Should we do that now? Should we do that, so we have that a little bit later?
We'll get there.
Okay, okay.
We won't forget the question, though. Go ahead.
That question may come a little bit as a frustrating question for you.
Yeah, it's okay. No, it's good.
My question is, if the town is a partner, if the town looks after paying the bills, the town then is required to put that project to a bid?
Say that again, to a what?
To a bid.
To a bid, okay, yeah. With more than one quote?
Right.
Yes.
It doesn't mean that that is not a successful bidder.
Yep.
But the process has to be transparent, and we're obligated to do it. We are obligated by law. So, I know you have your eyes set on that design, that provider, but is it fair enough for me to say, depending on the model that we use at the end, and if the town is the partner that's going to look after the finances of the project as in the past, then we're obligated to a certain process? Just putting it forward to be sure that we are transparent here.
Yeah, was that done with the playground?
The playground went through the similar process. We talked to a few different places, but...
Right.
Yep.
And you had different quotes and different things.
Yeah, and so we can do that. We do something similar.
So I did have a couple of companies give us designs and quotes.
Maybe we'll share that more, though.
Yeah, because normally it's a closed bid process, and that's the way it's done. So that's the way municipalities are obligated to do it, just put it this way.
Yeah, I think the best thing, we can maybe go through some quotes and say similar things, but this is a custom-made thing, right?
No, I understand.
So one company will do this, one company, but we'll give you something that's similar, and so that we know, are we being competitive, or is someone just taking advantage and doing whatever they want?
I mean, we have to follow the proper protocol when we have, when we are the partner that looks after the finances.
Yeah, so if we do it in one way that we've talked about, where you guys pay for it, we fund all the money because of GST issues, then that does come into like, okay, you guys are doing this project, so absolutely.
Yeah, just to make sure we understand that.
We can certainly come with other quotes that we have. I don't know if that fulfills that requirement.
I think it has to be a closed bid, I don't know. Jeff, can you tell me exactly what the bylaw says? Is that a closed bid?
You have two parallel pieces of legislation. You have the town policy on purchasing.
Right.
And then you also have the Northwest Trade Partnership Agreement. So it's goods over $250,000, so it's required to go out to a bid process.
Right, that's the one I was referring to.
So we have two pieces there. We can maybe cross that bridge when we get there, a little bit with how we can work it.
At least we can have some kind of a measurement to say, okay, if someone's putting in a bid too much or too low, at least you have some kind of a threshold to look back on.
Well, I just agree with the aspect we understand, that could be a little better for pickup.
So can we work with the town then to understand what is required, and we'll have that for you guys?
Absolutely, sure.
Jeff, what I'll deal with that.
I can just tell you from my three or four quotes that I got, for the product and how big it is, this one seemed like the best deal. I mean, that's just taking my word for it.
Well, there's an interesting process when you get into bids. When you get three or four people in there bidding, all of a sudden, things change. You know, this bid may not be $417,000 anymore, it may be, you know, $40,000 or $30,000 less. That's kind of my experience in contracting, you know, you start to squeeze the pennies and, because you want, you're hungry, you want the job, right? And so, and you still have the quality.
We want to balance a couple of things. We want to balance with having proper cost of bill and stuff, but also being fair at the same time. And that's what we'll come up with. It's not, it's not a matter of beating someone down right to the bottom, but that you're getting a fair product for the price that it should be, and so we'll come up with that.
We also really trust BDI, too. Like, they worked with us with the playground, and when we had issues with the...
There's other factors, for sure.
Yeah, there's other factors.
No, I was just going to say, the most important part, though, is as a parent, is one, high quality.
That's right, there's many factors.
Yeah, so it's not about the cheapness necessarily, but it's about the product we can get. If we're going to have kids running and jumping and hopping and splashing, we need high-quality stuff, because we've all been to places where you pay for what you get sometimes, right? And especially when we're dealing with little kids, or kids, we have to be very selective about what we use, so.
But we will go through that process, so that everything's in order.
And we definitely trust BDI's product.
Counsel, Benridge?
No, let's go through the cost, and then I'll come back to my question.
So then the question is, where are we going to get the money? So this is our proposed income. We currently have a C-FIT grant application, and it was due October the first. Any C-FIT grant, there's two mainstreams. There's $125,000 or less, and there's three times throughout the year you can submit for that. The one for anything above $125,000, you only, they only take one application per year. So we had to put it in by October the first. And we've applied for $200,000. This is what we would ask of the town at this point, $70,000 cash, and then the shed, the landscaping, and the lighting. We're still actually trying to find one or two major donors to try and reach that amount of cash that the town would have to pay, but that's, we're just working on that. We have been to the county, and they have committed $35,000 cash pending receipt of the C-FIT grant. So once we get C-FIT, they'll put in $35,000. Our Rotary Club has the $37,500, our portion. This $10,000 grant we can apply for in the spring. They gave us one for the playground, and we're confident we...
We'll get that again.
Someone from their group has come and presented at our Rotary Club, and we have a good working relationship with them. Fundraising, this is through that ATB website. Now, we started handing out flyers at the parade and ever since, and so far, just through that website, we've got $15,650. So we're less than $20,000 away on that. And then Joe Ripley has said he would donate that. So really, our, this is, without the C-FIT grant, we can't do it, it's make or break. Right now with our application, and we've spoken to the people at C-FIT, I've spoken to Sharon Hurst, she says we have a strong application. The one thing that's pending right now is the strong town support letter. Now, the previous one said, you know, it can be built on town land, it can, the town will operate it and all that kind of stuff afterwards. It's just committing to the finance, which I know there's lots of things left on.
All right, so while we are on this letter requirement, maybe you can help us view the financing or the starting of the building of that project, maybe not now, but possibly within a window that is allowed by the grant. Can you help us understand that?
Absolutely. So with the large C-FIT grant stream, from the time you receive the grant, you have 30 months to complete the project and report it. So, even if the letter could say, you know, the town will provide its portion of financing within the 30-month window to complete and report the project, that would really help the support letter?
Okay, because that's what was lacking in the former letter, and we are well aware. The reason we're aware of it is because we did not have a new council that approved a new budget. So we could hardly do it on their behalf.
Right.
They could have said no, and then you would be really sitting there, you and I, wondering what do we next, do next. So this is a proper time for that letter to be strengthened.
Right. And Sharon from the C-FIT grant fully recognized that. She recognized the conditional nature of the other one, and that's why she's asked us to come back to the new council.
Okay, that's good. Counsel, Benridge?
Okay, Dr. Lowe, we're talking about the $70,000 commitment from the town. My question is to our administration, that's a $20,000 shed. As a recreation, looked at upgrading that bathroom facility on the town square. At one point, we were looking at doing something with that bathroom building.
To put, to house the water, the water treatment and the pump and all that?
Could we include this thing in that renovation?
Budget of whatever you were doing?
So we haven't budgeted anything specifically for that, but it isn't to say it could now? Yeah, it just hasn't been done at this point, mostly because we haven't, we don't have a definitive location, right? We're still debating locations, so we haven't, we haven't looked at that at this point.
Who makes the, who makes the recommendations for the area? Does council make that?
Well, we'll be looking at all the recreation infrastructure, yeah.
So I guess we, what we're trying to accomplish, we're trying to get a little bit more concrete, because if we're going to go do the project, then we, like you guys, we kind of need the window to know if we're going to get this money, if we do get it, then also the commitment's not there, then we should stop, right? So we're just balancing on both sides of getting commitments and also having a timeframe so that it gives us time to figure things out, right?
All right, so that is what we appreciate in your coming, because now we all understand what you're after and the timeframe that you want that project started at least. So that will help with the letter that we can forward.
So are we going to get to the cost per year?
So let's, so, oh, back to your timeline. So we'll find out in February or March if we get the C-FIT. Best-case scenarios, we do it there, but we understand with the town money, there you have other budget stuff for 2018, so that can be pushed back to 2019 type stuff, you know, within that 30-month window. Where's our, let's just go over this real quick. The question was, how much would it be for extra work for town employees? This recirculation system is all controlled by an app on your phone. It can show you chemical levels, you can dispense them through that, so it's really user-friendly. So it just comes down to general maintenance and not keep like...
Could it be possible to have a camera zooming on us, so at this rate of vandalism, we get the text out?
I think we've done it in the past.
We did it at Rotary Park.
We did have the Rotary Park. We've done it.
There might be a good addition for the town to...
You guys talked about cameras around town, and maybe that's something that gets revisited again, right?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, Counsel, Sel.
Maybe this is a question that could be best directed to Brad, even though he's in the gallery.
You can't really...
About the cameras, Counsel? Just a benefit from his perspective.
Cameras don't necessarily stop, right? But at least you know what's going on.
Well, they identify the offenders.
Right.
He's giving thumbs up, so I'm thinking about it.
Cameras are good.
And it depends on the quality of the camera, because some of these garbage cameras are out there.
We, we want to have some have a decent.
You want to be able to recognize the people rather have digitized.
So part of the maintenance again too, I think it probably doesn't need to get tested every day. It's kind of, it'll be kind of like the pool. The pool has to be tested, right? But to answer your question with cost, there's not a definitive cost that's out there. We can kind of get ideas from other places, other towns, but it's a cement pad. It's needs to be cleaned. It's just things that we think about, but we don't have any definitive cost.
So here's the main costs right here. This is the very last slide. I jumped ahead a few. Water, so any water that is lost to evaporation will be a cost. Electricity to run the recirculation system. Chemicals, you know, to, to make sure that, you know, the water's of the right quality. And now I'm not sure what cost that is to the pool each year. And then, and then basically winter prep. You have to blow out the lines, um, in the winter, before the winter, just like you would all the other sprinkler lines. We were trying to get an idea from Tabor and from Fort MacLeod and stuff, what kind of, um, what, what the overall cost is for them. Sorry, we're calling this thing a crime as well. Any, any lockdown on that?
Oh, I've got some inquiries into other towns, but I don't think they break it out well enough to be able to tell me. That's part of the problem. But I'm trying to get from a few towns what, what that looks like.
We know Glenwood's just go straight to wastewater, so that's all it costs. Our estimated cost on our CFIT application when we added stuff up was less than $5,000 for annual ongoing costs.
But that doesn't count the salaries of the workers.
You were counting that.
We kind of, yeah, the, the question is, how long would it take, take each day?
We don't know.
Right, yeah.
Depends if there's vandalism or not.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And speaking of vandalism, this herbal product is metal, so that stands up better than plastic. Will ensure there's good lighting, which has really helped with the playground. Town square is wide open, so it's nice that you got a whole bunch of houses right along and they can kind of report on suspicious behavior. We think there'd be less vandalism there than probably other areas in town. And then people have also asked, what about people who just want to take a shower? Well, it'll be used, it'll only be on during peak hours of the day. So it's, it's programmed through the recirculation system. Programmed to come on at, you know, 10:00 or 11:00 AM and go off at 7:00 or 8:00 PM at night or however, whatever you set it to. And then there'd probably be more of it with by the pool. There's not as many transits up at town square. So basically, this is the last slide. Yeah, what we're looking for at this point is a letter of support for our CFIT application. That's really the missing piece for the $200,000 that we're looking for. And what we talked about there already.
If I might, although it's unusual for me to ask, but, um, obviously our last letter was council had it for the conditional. Did CFIT have any comment on the conditional nature of the county's letter? Is that a concern? And, or what I'm wondering is, should ours mimic theirs to some degree? If they were comfortable with the letter of, the level of commitment from the county level, should ours mimic theirs to a point? I'm just not sure what their reaction was to that.
They didn't really say anything about it. Um, basically the county once said, we'll, we've, we'll contribute $35,000 cash once the CFIT grant is received.
So the only condition was?
Cause they're giving straight cash too.
So the condition is, you give us a grant and the county will give us 35,000. So that's pretty well the order of things. So if you talk about mimicking, that may be what we can also say. We'll give you the 91,000. We'll give you the 91,000 in work or cash upon, upon a successful petition.
I could forward to the county letter.
Well, gentlemen, thank you very much. Any more questions of, uh, delegation? Thank you.
I'm not sure this place say enough, but I'm gonna say it anyway.
But if it is a comment on a project, you need to reserve it for our discussion.
Then it is.
Thank you.
But it is private.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we have a second delegation, very patient, well, we're just a few minutes late. And it's our, um, CPO Brad Larson.
Hello.
So thank you for taking the time to come this evening and present your draft plan of operation for the coming years. So I hope we all read it. It's quite in-depth with a vision, with a mission, with goals, with, uh, measuring, uh, measurement to be able to say if they were successful or not. The only thing that is not there is a priority of council, which is what we will work on next week.
Yes, that's, and you mentioned it, hopefully we've all, we've all read it, I know I have.
I hope so.
I hope so too. The, I'm not gonna go through, I don't want to go through point by point in verbatim. There's just a few things, um, that I want to talk about that are important, I guess, to what I feel going forward. Um, and then is there any questions? I guess I want to start there. Is there any questions about what somebody has read or anything in there so that I can fix that before we go forward? Yes?
Maybe the question that I have is to understand a little bit better the divisions of duty between yourself and Malcolm.
Sure. So if we, we talked about that, and actually I have that noted here with relation to designation and, and appointments and things like that. The main difference between Malcolm and I is, is authority, a level of authority. Malcolm has a level of authority appointed by the town of Carstens to be, uh, to enforce bylaws. He has the authority to issue bylaw violation tags, seize animals that are in contravention of a, a bylaw or an animal control bylaw. Things like that. Malcolm doesn't have the authority of provincial detention, um, which would be offenses detention. We'll use, I'm just gonna use this as a, as an example, would be a traffic stop. Under no circumstances could Malcolm stop traffic, because that would be a provincial level detention. Malcolm has the detention power of writing somebody a bylaw tag. So if you find somebody running their dog off leash, things like that, that's where Malcolm could detain that person. That person's not free to leave, but he doesn't have the power to arrest them should they say, no, I'm, I'm leaving and walk away. So that's where we lose a level of, of authority. Whereas with me, appointed by the province as a peace officer, and even defined under the criminal code as a peace officer, that gives me that authority to take that one step further. If I detained you and you basically tell me to pound sand, I now have that ability to say, nope. Now you're under arrest. And now you're under the Provincial Offenses and Procedures Act. That's where the arrest power would come from on that. The, also the big main one is the provincial level of authority. Authority under numerous acts is listed in the, in the plan to detain for gaming liquor act type offenses, things like that. And that's where, there's also a higher level of training and knowledge that come with, um, that higher level of authority. When I go to training for eight weeks, I get trained on how to talk to people, how to deal with people, how to protect myself, how to deal with aggressive animals and deal with traffic incidents and things like that. I always like to use, I don't like to use the example of being attacked. Everybody kind of has an idea of what they would do if they're attacked. But how do you handle a situation in parking your vehicle on an NBC? Or how do you handle parking your vehicle, um, in the event of a disaster downtown? I have that level of training where somebody like Malcolm wouldn't. Now Malcolm has a really high level of training coming from his background, but a lot of them aren't applicable in Carstens.
Counselor Brown?
Sorry, I just wanted to differentiate between you and the RCMP then.
Sure.
So for you, so let's, let's talk about homeless people on Main Street.
Okay.
Is it you that works with the RCMP in regards to them or is it, who, who handles that? What umbrella is that?
Take your pick.
Okay, but it is under your umbrella as well?
Yep, absolutely. Well, it depends.
For loitering, they'll say loitering.
Well, there's no offense there.
Uh huh.
So, loitering is a hard one. Let's use drinking in public.
But that is an area that you.
Drinking in public, I can 100% deal with. The police can 100% deal with.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if that was you as well as the RCMP, okay.
Now there's, it's a very, that's a, circumstantially, the RCMP and I differ, right? It's, now if you have somebody drinking in public and they commit an aggravated assault, I can no longer deal with that. But if they're just drinking in public, I can deal with it. So it's a, it's a circumstantial question.
Counselor Brown?
Brad, what about all these snippers or around the cahoon? What, what, what do you do there? Cause they're doing it all the time. I see them pass them around now.
Yep. It's again, something we're working on, um, in going forward.
It's an intoxicant, isn't it?
It is, 100%.
Bylaw doesn't.
It's not by law, it's not.
Okay.
It's, um, administration and I are working very hard and diligently on creating legislation.
Okay.
Without contradicting what the criminal code says or what contradicting what the gaming liquor act says. People sniffing, are they committing an offense? Are they drunk and, or are they intoxicated in a public place? Once they're at that certain level of intoxication, yes, they are.
Yeah.
Now here's where I run into a problem where the RCMP or any law enforcement agency is define that level of intoxication. Are they so intoxicated that they cannot take care of themselves or others? Or are they a danger to themselves or others? Now I have power. There's case law that states they have to be so stupefied drunk that they cannot, can, they can no longer take care of very simple needs of a human being, right? So that's where we run into the problem, because I can arrest that person at that point. They're under arrest, I take them back, I put them in cells at the RCMP detachment. I can no longer charge, because the gaming liquor act states you can either arrest or charge. And if you charge, you have to release that person to somebody who has capability of taking care of themselves, of taking care of that person. So if I can drive them home to their mom or to their dad or drive them home to their wife or husband, great. I'll issue them the $115 ticket and then it's up to the courts to decide, right? 99.9% of the time, I can't do that downtown. So, okay, we have to arrest, we take them back to cells. The problem with the intoxicants that they're using is that it has a very, very short, um, interior life, I guess we'll say. It can metabolize very quickly.
Yeah.
So by the time I get them back to cells, uh, I get them lodged, searched, everything's done, which takes half an hour to 45 minutes, depending on their level of intoxication. If they can't stand up, then it's gonna take longer, of course. You get them into cell and half an hour later, they're fine. Legally, I have no obligation to hold them anymore, so we can kick them right back out. And because they can go buy and use that intoxicant, that particular non-potable substance, we run into the same rotating door.
Thank you for explaining that.
No problem.
Are there any other questions you would like to ask? Counselor Benji?
Brad, being in a uniform past years, I can understand your frustrations. But in your strategic plan, it, it suggests that we have you or two peace officers for municipal enforcement, plus a contracted, uh, bylaw enforcement or, um, animal control officer, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Or whatever it is.
Sure.
Is there any other thing that we need to worry about in here? Is that a complement of your, your, your division?
Sure.
It's a suggestion.
Yeah, that was my, so municipal enforcement would provide operational duties in accordance with the objective of the plan. It is designed around a complement of one community peace officer and one contracted bylaw enforcement officer or two community peace officers with room for growth in personnel.
Okay, the bylaw enforcement officer.
Yes.
Under contract, does, does that individual have to be five days a week?
No, it, there's nothing that states that they have to be, no.
Okay.
No. Is it nice for me to be able to say, okay, you handle these three calls and I'm gonna handle these three calls? Yeah, absolutely. And is it, and when I went back to the, the two community peace officers, the problem that I'm, the problem that I'm running into with Malcolm, and I like Malcolm, he's a, he's a wonderful officer, he's a great guy. The problem running into is that anytime Malcolm issues a charge and there needs to be follow-through with it going into a provincial level, it has to go through me. So if he issues, uh, 100 tickets a year, that's now 100 more times that I have to go to court, et cetera, right? Where instead of having that other person that has that initial authority. Now, that's not to be said that we want to hire another, or that I'm looking to hire another community peace officer level one. That's not at all what I'm saying. It's just nice to have that backup too. That's another big thing.
I gotta outline your powers here very admirably, Brad. Is this the outer limit of your parameters as a level one peace officer?
What do you mean? Sorry, I don't understand.
Hey, can there be additional things given to you to do if we apply to the province to ask them to give you those powers? For instance.
Yes.
You didn't talk about DUIs. Can you issue tickets for DUIs if we gave you the proper training?
Unfortunately, I can't, because that's under the criminal code.
Okay.
Now, that could change in the near future. Could change in the very near future, because BC is doing a provincial, um, level of impaired operation. Canada just wiped a lot of the stuff that police officers have the ability to do when it comes to impaired drivers. So Alberta's, I think, looking at going to the same, uh, level of service that British Columbia is offering.
Theoretically.
Theoretically, it could come back and then of course, there'd be a bunch of training that would have to go into my position, but yes. Now, look at, there's one other thing that, as per your question here. The one thing that's not on my appointment as of right now, but I would like to apply for, uh, going forward, would be liquor prohibition. Right now, I can't enforce the liquor prohibition in Carstens.
Which means?
Which means, so there's a separate act that governs basically the town of Carstens in our dry community. And it's not under the gaming and liquor act. It's under the liquor control act. I don't currently have that under my appointment.
Cause no one does. That's for the side.
That's right, so, except for the RCMP.
I suppose by default.
Right. So the RCMP can enforce those provisions or that provision. I think there's one provision in that act. So it's something that I would look at going forward, so that I have the ability, if we have a bootlegger in town, for me to investigate rather than just the RCMP investigating. Now, it's something to look at.
Okay, we have another hypothetical question.
Hold on a second, there's a bunch of people. Okay, Counselor Self, Counselor Benji, Counselor Paul.
Another hypothetical for you.
Go ahead.
Brad, I know what you're talking about, you know, levels of having people to support you theoretically. What if you had a four-legged partner? Could you do that?
Where, as of right now, we wouldn't be allowed to have a, a canine. I used to be a canine handler. There's no, um, legal authority for a peace officer to handle, handle a dog, for a protection-based dog.
Okay.
Which would be awesome though.
Counselor Benji?
You can't handle any CC codes, right?
Well.
Unless it's trespassing or, or.
Trespassing is a trespass act under Alberta.
Yeah.
But it's not under the criminal code, break and enter?
Okay, yes, there's a bunch. There's trespassing at night, which is trespassing on a residential area. That's a criminal code offense. There are unlawful entry to private, uh, private property. That's a criminal code offense. Break and enter, that's a criminal code. And then there's trespass premises, which would be trespass premises act of Alberta and penny trespass act of Alberta, both of which I can enforce.
Counselor Paul?
I'm just trying to get this clear in my mind as a rookie counselor, kind of. That one time we had the RCMP, they pieced the town. Now we're getting different levels of piecing. Is there a reason why? Other towns are going to this as well. Is there, is there a reason why we're adding on other levels of piecing besides the RCMP?
Cutbacks?
I think that would be best answered. I am here to, uh, enhance the level of service that the town of Carstens is gonna get from their law enforcement. The RCMP, it's very difficult to get a frontline RCMP member to go and investigate a dog at large file. That file would probably get written off fairly quickly.
So we can have a dog catcher on the RCMP.
What I'm trying to understand is, are you doing the same job as the RCMP or?
No, I'm not handling criminal code files, I'm not handling murders, I'm not handling assaults, not domestics. I'm not handling Criminal Code files, I'm not handling murders, I'm not handling assaults, I'm not domestics.
Whereas in the past, they handled all the stuff that you handled, but they're not now, is that what you're telling me?
They can't. Would they rather pass that on to me? Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
That's where-
That is a very good question, uh, councillor. And that's something maybe when we have the RCMP, we need to kinda talk.
I can't answer.
I'm just trying to understand why-
Or enough policing, uh, policing committee. That is a good place for that.
I just want to mention for reference, and I didn't include it here because it wasn't part of this discussion, but during the planning session, I have all of the approvals that Brad has, all the list of acts that he has approved currently under. So, we can look at that and see if there's some gaps.
And there is.
But you'll have that in your planning session agenda.
So, is it gaps we're dealing with that he's dealing with?
I think the best way to answer that would be, I can handle a lot of the same things that the RCMP can handle. The RCMP can handle a lot of the same things that I can handle. But where are your priorities in law enforcement, right? My priorities are in the lesser, um, crimes or, uh, we'll say, betterment of life for the community.
Okay.
Um, I'm here as not an essential service, but rather as a-
Community.
Community enhancement service.
Okay.
So, I'm here to investigate those dog files and those smaller things that make life a little bit better in Cardston and still provide a level of emergency service.
And what you provide, which has been for the past four years, what we heard, you are filling the gap of that lack of visibility.
Yeah, it's another big thing.
That was for the past four years, what we were really frustrated by hearing from a lot of people. Not that the RCMP is not willing to be there, but because of their workload, could no longer do at the same level as in the past.
Let me ask one other question because I'm just trying to get this clear in my mind.
Yeah.
The funding for Brad, where does this come from?
From the town.
Okay, it comes out of the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I could, just a couple of things. Just, if you remember, two years ago, you and I, and I think it was Councilor Benbury, met with the commissioner of the RCMP.
Yeah, we did.
And we asked them that question about getting another, more people here. And they said, and that's why I threw out cutbacks, they don't have the funding to have the, the manpower and they have a, uh, they have a formula and we're just short on the, the population to get. And that's why Brad's here. And I'm so glad that he is. And so, that level of policing that we need in our community just wasn't being fulfilled by the RCMP. And they, they were quite apologetic about it to us. I mean, we had a good meeting, but their hands were tied and there was nothing else. And that's when we went forward.
There was another-
The enhanced- Pardon me?
There was something else spoken at that time.
Yes.
They said, "Yes, they could provide us with more RCMP out."
For 120,000.
Uh, for price. But they also told us that those RCMP would be the same RCMP that we have in town doing overtime. And then, we said, "That won't work." Because then you have four that is burnt out and instead of having more of them, you'll have-
Less.
On the long run, less.
Now, the other part of my question, I had two things that I was gonna ask.
Go ahead.
If you stop somebody on a DUI-
Mm-hmm.
Can you then contact the RCMP, detain that person till the RCMP comes- so that he can take over from there and, and arrest and charge?
I have a few avenues that I can take. Um, right now, that is the protocol that I would probably take is, uh, I can, I can arbitrarily detain somebody. So, technically, I can't detain them for the impaired. So, I can't say, uh, "You're under detention for the impaired."
Mm-hmm.
What I can say is, uh, I'm writing a ticket because I pulled that person over for a reason.
Yeah.
So, whether it be speeding or whatever the case, I make a few mistakes on my ticket until the RCMP get there.
Yeah.
And then, they take over the investigation for the impaired. Um, I can't sit there for four hours making mistakes.
Yeah.
Right? That's, now, you're becoming arbitrarily detained.
You have to do what you have to do.
That's right.
Get that person off the road.
Now, under no circumstances am I gonna let that person drive away.
Right.
Right. Um, there's an avenue that a peace officer can take in the 24-hour suspension. So, at that point, I'm gonna seize that person's operator's license for the next 24 hours. The vehicle will be seized and there's no charges for the impaired, but I'm still maintaining a safe community in the sense that I'm getting that person off the road.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Jeff, you had a question or a comment?
Uh, we'll talk about this more next week. I just wanted to mention some of the genesis of a level one peace officer. You'll recall Mr. Rod Tilson came and spoke. He's a level one peace officer north of us. And there was some discussion about a level one gives you this more kind of grassroots community policing where if you pull someone over for speeding, now you're observing other things in the vehicle. Maybe there's some goods that were stolen from the night before when there was something going on. It gave us a little more of a feel. And the other thing for me that I see as the advantage is today, for example, Brad gave 19, was it 19 warnings?
No, I gave him, I, well, I gave him nine during one operation.
So, just today on the restraints?
Yeah, so I gave nine and a half.
So, you have nine warnings at the elementary school for not having your kids in restraints. It was difficult for us to get the priority of the RCMP to go to the school at 3:30 on a Tuesday. It was very difficult to do that, but now with Brad, I can say, "Hey, Brad", or to go speak to every school bus about sitting in your seats and abiding by the rules. These are priorities we, not blaming the RCMP, but we simply couldn't demand their exact time and attention when we wanted it.
And so, to add to that, I invited the RCMP to that traffic operation today for, uh, essentially, what we did was, or what I did, was set up a check stop in the elementary school playground zone or school zone. I stopped every vehicle that went past me looking at their child safety restraints and their seat belts. I invited the RCMP. They were going to attend and they received a domestic five minutes before we were there to start. That tied up the next four hours of their shift.
Yeah. Okay, so, that's good. Councilor Brown, Councilor Benbury, and then we have our next delegation, if you don't mind.
There's a few more things that I want to touch on too.
Okay. Do you, do you-
I can, yes. The one thing that I really want to touch on for why I'm here is what I call the community-oriented policing. Um, we're working on projects right now that I've kind of spearheaded. One of them is the municipal, or the enforcement's gate. Um, in December here, I think it's December 9th, I have a date at the arena. And I have gone about contacting law enforcement agencies from all over our area. And we're all gonna go there in our skates and our half-uniforms. We won't have duty belts and vests and all that stuff on, but in our uniforms, and we're just gonna skate with kids. And during that time, we're accepting donations for, um, used any type of sports equipment, which we're then gonna donate back to any kid in town that doesn't have the ability to play sports or doesn't have the money to get a hockey helmet. I'm a passionate hockey player, so that's why I picked the skate. Um, but we looked at many other things that we can do. Uh, I know Council Rich and I, the RCMP, will be attending the junior high school on the 3rd and playing basketball with the kids. That's something that him and I came up with. So, that's another thing that a community peace officer brings to the table. You don't have frontline boots-on-the-ground police officers that wanna go out and just do those things. And that's why I love my position because I can. I have the ability to take an hour out of my day to go and play basketball with kids on the corner. I don't have to worry about going to a domestic.
Good. Thank you. Councilor Brown.
Are you enough? Do we need another you?
Well, you can never have another me.
I don't think so. May well say. Thank you. My question is, we have you and we have, we have our animal control man.
Mm-hmm.
Is, are, do we need more? Are you able to handle?
What level, that's a, that's a question that I'd be more willing to answer after the priorities from council come back to me. Because if council is happy with the level of service that I'm providing with an animal control contractor or bylaw contractor, then I wouldn't say that we do.
Okay.
Um, as a personal side note, would I love to have a partner? Absolutely. It'd be great to have somebody that I can go to calls to. Um, there are places in town that I don't want to go alone, so then you have to rely on bringing in our RCMP member um, for that extra set of, I mean, I'd take Malcolm. He, but that opens doors of liability for the town and I don't want to do that. Um, so, yeah, it's nice. It's also nice to have the level of service when I'm away, but-
Do you have anything else?
No, I don't think so. I think that's all I've got for you guys.
Thank you very much. I think Councilor Benbury has one more question.
Just a comment, Brad. I think you summed up your position in that community. You're an enhancement to the RCMP. You enhance the program to keeping our community safe. And with that situation, I say to the citizens who don't see the RCMP out driving around, get out of your house, out of your lazy, uh, boy chair and look through your windows because I'm out there driving around, as you know, and I see the RCMP driving around our community. I also see you. And, uh, but what your position is, is to look at, at making our community safer than what it is, especially on our Main Street. And I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation and thank you very much for that serial document. I very much enjoyed reading it and the time and the effort and, and the thinking that went behind it. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you for having me.
Much appreciate it for all your services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a question. I never received this part of the package for me.
Okay. So, we'll make sure that you get it.
Please send it to me.
Yes.
You're all holding it in the exact same folder, so that's strange.
Yeah, I, I, I looked and figured it was down.
That's okay. I would, I would like to have it on my computer.
We have one, uh-
Why don't we swap Shem and Mr. Innis? Because Shem's here for the duration whether he wants to-
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, Shem, Shem, go ahead. Would you mind?
No, 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 let's swap that. Shem will be in access, but then Mr. Innis.
That's okay.
I was going to call on Dave.
We'll be okay, we knew my sins.
Okay. Dave, please come forward and, uh, we are very thrilled to have you there. Ca- Do you need some water?
Yes, if you have some water.
Could you, uh, Shem, could you please provide us with a bottle of water?
I just have it. It was in a different folder. All the stuff, but this was in the other folder. I do have it now. It's good. Welcome. It's good to see you.
Thank you. And, uh, Dave, uh, Dave Innis is our, uh, co-chair of the Power Committee. We have had the Power in town for about nine years now. And we're coming on, this year, on our 10th anniversary of the Power. And I think that it's very important for this council to understand a little bit why we have the Power and what it has done for us in our community as a springboard to other opportunities. Go ahead.
Well, thank you. It's, uh, nice to be here and be able to meet with the mayor and, and you as our newly-elected town council. This is a bit of a privilege. I've never been to a town council meeting before. And, uh, as, as Mayor Coleman says, that I'm, uh, Dave Innis, and I've worked on the Powwow ever since we've had one. Uh, sometimes we have people that look at the Powwow as strictly a very expensive form of entertainment that mainly benefits the natives. Um, it is that, um, but it's much more than that. Uh, as you look at your terms of reference for the Powwow Committee, they talk about, uh, three members from the Blood Tribe and three members from the community. And they're not just members at large in essence, but, uh, we've asked, uh, we've gone to the very top and asked for band council, councillors to fill some of those positions from, from the Kynai side and councillors, town councillors, to fill some of those positions from the Cardston side. And I've come to realize that, uh, relationships, particularly with our native population, are, are built on, uh, trust and are built on friendship. And anything that happens, whether it's water or sewer or garbage collection or, uh, dealing with the homelessness, uh, dealing with some of the issues that Brad is talking about, if we're looking for band council support, will happen because of the relationships that are built uh, with the Powwow Committee. And, and then those relationships are taken back into band council and thoroughly discussed. Uh, without building those relationships of trust and friendship, uh, if, for example, if, uh, Paula was to call somebody on the band council and say, "We would like to invite somebody to come in and talk about homelessness and some of the problems on Main Street", they would be very polite on the phone and said, "Well, we will talk about it and get back to you". But in their private council chambers, they would say, "Oh, some do-gooder white honky just called me". And, uh, and, and I, and I don't mean that to be derogatory in any way to Paula Brown. But that's the reaction of the band council. Where if, I'll just give you an example, we were sitting waiting for a Powwow meeting to start one day and discuss the pros and cons of the Powwow. And, uh, Marcel Weaselhead, who is a band councillor, came in and we were just waiting for a couple of minutes for someone to arrive. And they said, "Let me tell you about the plan that the band council is just putting together to deal with homelessness". And he took 10 or 15 minutes and explained in great detail what they, they want to do. And, uh, it was just very impressive because of the relationship we have with the Powwow Committee. Uh, he, he shared what the band council is wanting to move forward and to do. I was very impressed with, with his ideas. Uh, I would like to advocate and simply say that we need the Powwow in order to build relationships of friendship and relationships of trust with, uh, with the leadership of, of the Blood Reserve. And the Powwow in essence gives us a common ground to, uh, to work on, to associate, and gives us a common ground for opening up some side conversations on any of these other issues. Uh, Shem can probably tell you the exact dollar amount that it costs the town to do a Powwow. The band puts in $5,000. The town puts in $5,000 plus dollars, uh, to make the Powwow work. We give away about $9,800 in prize money, of which the band puts in $5,000 and the town puts in $5,000. In addition to that, it costs a little bit for, uh, extra services such as, uh, tents from ATCO, uh, a little bit of food, a little bit of, uh, policing, a little bit of, uh, electrical work, a little bit of, uh, grounds upkeep, uh, so forth. The band brings in their summer students to act as ambassadors of goodwill, uh, to pass out programs, to assist with parking, garbage collection, to put up the tents, to take down the tents, to help with seating and, and, and so forth. Brad is obviously there as our community peace officer. Uh, but I think the Powwow is very important, uh, to this community. And we've heard some very positive comments about it. We, uh, were sitting with Mayor Skow a few years ago and, uh, this lady came up and she was a jingle dancer. Was wearing her jingle dress and had all of the, the jingle bells across, across her dress. And she came up and addressed Mayor Skow and said, "I'm assuming you guys have something to do with this Powwow". And we assured her that we did. And she says, "Well, let me tell you, uh, of the healing experience that has taken place by attending this Powwow". She said, uh, that's a little girl. She said, "During the blockade, whenever the blockade occurred", she said, "I watched the RCMP drag my grandfather back across the highway to, to the Blood Reserve side by his hair because he was on the Cardston side and he had all of these political issues and hard feelings issues and the blockade taking place at Mel Pitcher's bulk station and, and so forth". She said, "I decided, as a little girl, and I would never come into Cardston unless I absolutely had to". She said, "I, I go to Lethbridge to do all my shopping". She said, "But because of the Powwow and the feelings that you guys have or are trying to create or reaching out to us and saying, 'Hey, we will do something that's culturally sensitive to us as native people'". Uh, she said, "I, I've, I've had this healing take place". to us as native people,'" she said, "I've had this healing take place." And she says, "I'm very grateful for what you're doing and the feeling that the Powaw is creating on the reserve." And she said, "And I will bring my family and I will bring my business back to Cartston." That's one example. We sit with Dexter Rosehead when he was on council and he invited the mayor to come and some of the town councils to come and participate in their parade that they have and reaching out to get to know us. And, you know, really, when it comes to the Powaw, I'm just a community member who says, "I'll volunteer a little time and make it work" and so forth. But the Powaw is important because it sends a feeling to the native people. It says, "Hey, these guys are trying to bury some of the hard feelings of the past and doing a Powaw. And let's bury some of our hard feelings as well and reach out to them." And so I, I mean, that's basically all I want to say about the Powaw is it's important and for us to do. As I listen to some of the issues that Brad was speaking about, I can say, you know, if we were to reach out and the mayor were to call Marcel Weaselhead, he would probably come in and explain what the band is trying to do with homelessness. Some of the issues that the natives have, you walk down Main Street and they say, "Oh, you guys are just a bunch of squatters squatting on our land." And we come back and we say, "Well, if you really understood, we're not. We're here legally and so we have this tug-of-war." But if we were to simply say, "Yes, we understand that there was a survey done in 1882 that gave the band 650 square miles of property and the border did end a little bit south of Etna. The last exit into Etna was a reserve boundary, nine miles north of the international boundary." The Indian Affairs Commissioner Dewey was unhappy with that and he demanded that the reserve be resur surveyed in 1883. And so it was resur surveyed in 1883 and moved the boundary to 14 miles, which is the current boundary. And so when the Indians say, "You're really on our territory," they've never accepted the second survey and they do have a point. If we were to simply respond to them and say, "Listen, guys, we understand the survey of 1882 and 1883. We understand that you lost 650 square miles of territory down to about 575 square miles of reserve. It's clearly an issue between the leaders of the band and the government of Canada and we wish you well in the courts as you take this issue to court. It isn't an issue with card coming. They didn't even have the courtesy to mention to Chief Redcrow that they had to reduce the size of the reserve until he saw the Mormons camped here. And that's why the Indians think that they made a secret deal with the Mormons because the Commissioner of Indian Affairs, who was responsible for looking after the Indians, didn't have the courtesy or the gumption or the guts to tell Chief Redcrow that they had to reduce the size of the reserve. And so we can handle that very easily and say, "Guys, we're trying hardest. We're keeping the Powaw. We're doing all of these things to show you that we're not the bad guys in the picture." So anyways, if anybody has any questions, I'll take some questions. Otherwise, I'll get out of here and let you get on with your business.
David, I want to thank you for this presentation. Thank you for helping us get a little bit of a context. I've worked with you for the past seven years. I know how much your heart is there and everything you do to make that a success every year. Every time we done it, we worked hard, we raised funds, the community supported us and we moved forward and it always has been a success. But we need to have more people from the town come to understand the narrative. That narrative is not understood either.
Well, sure. I have a lady who comes to her house and provides home care to my wife. My wife has MS and she thinks that the Powaw is a total waste of time, keeps her up at nighttime and is a little bit noisy. She would rather see the $5,000 the town puts into it into buying coats for dogs or whatever it happens to be. But literally, if we're going to build relationships with our neighbors to the north, it has to be done on common ground and the Powaw's common ground. We cannot go in and try to say, "Listen, guys, listen to me. We have the solution for all of your problems." They'll just look at us and I used the expression once before of white Mormon honky, do-gooder. And that's what they would see us as without putting an effort in on our part.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
First of all, I have been to every Powaw there's been in Cartston as long as I've lived here. My family and I have always gone to it. I support it. Secondly, I take being called a do-gooder as a compliment, so thank you. My question, I guess, is according to the first of it where you were talking about. So your point essentially is you want the support of council and you want the support of Cartston residents to see the importance of what working with the Blood Tribe can do for our community in essence. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, we need to work together.
And you feel like that it hasn't, it's progressing, but it's not where it needs to be? Would you say yes to that?
Yeah, it's progressing, but it isn't where it needs to be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment or questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thanks, David. I'm gonna get your water there, David.
Oh, yes.
No one else is gonna take it.
You know, without the support of, well, the town council, I guess, you know, some of you guys are gonna have a question about budget. You gotta be first to raise your hand and say, "Yeah, we should donate $5,000 to the Powaw."
Thank you.
All right?
All right.
Okay. All right. Just a little chance there, if you don't mind. 4D is going to be delayed a little bit. Shem is going to get.
For which?
C.
For C.
Okay.
For C, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
We need a person.
All right, let's go under five and do the adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 24th. Councilor Barnes?
I move to approve the minutes of the October 24th council minutes.
Thank you. Any questions regarding those minutes? Satisfied with the essence of them? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. If you have a fine typos of any sorts on any document, we don't need to bring them at the table. Just fire a little note to Jeff or to Shem and I'll pick them. 5B organizational meeting of October 24th, we need to approve those. Councilor Bantry?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the organizational meeting of October 4th.
There again, did you find it to be correct? Okay. All in favor? Thank you. All right, let's go under seven. We have a letter to Chief Roy Fox. When I was at the Rotary, I learned from Councilor John Lemieux that the chief had had a heart attack and was at this point in recovery. And I thought it would be a nice gesture for us to sign a letter and to wish him well. So there is a letter. If you accept that letter, we first of all will need a motion to approve that letter and then we will sign that letter if you are willing to approve it. So number one, we need a motion. Councilor Self?
I'll make that motion to accept the draft letter and sign it.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So Jeff, maybe you can say that letter?
I'll pass it over to you right away.
Thank you. All right. Under seven, B, elected official education program. That is an interesting program that will complete somewhat the training we have received on governance. The first day of that program is governance. The second day is on intermunicipal relations, on finances and other land, also on land and other questions. So I have asked Jeff to look into the possibility of offering to get training on day two rather than day one and see if possibly we would have a better rate. But at this point, I do not know the answer.
So yes, you can go to one day or the other, but it doesn't change your rate. So it's $200 a participant.
Yes.
The first day will be focused, like you said, on governance and the second, finance and ICFs and intermunicipal collaboration framework.
All right. So if you understand that would be because we are mandated to have one at least training from AUMA or any other consultant, we have fulfilled the obligation of the MGA at this point. Yes. So what we are doing now, the extra, becomes a professional development for us and therefore will come out of your pocket of $1,500 that you have.
$2,000, you mean?
$2,000. Well, yes, we propped it up. That's right. So it's one tenth of what you have, but it's a worthwhile training. So what the finance, the finance training, the intermunicipal, might be a good training for those of you who have not received training in that department. So what you will need to do is let Jeff know, let Jeff know who wants to go to that training so that.
You haven't signed yet, Eric?
I did.
Oh, she's signed.
I did.
Oh, he went and signed.
All right.
Can we go to one day or the other? Or both? Yeah. You're registered for the whole thing. Whatever you choose to show up for.
I think honestly it'd be hard to be tough on governance.
I'm just wondering if we really need it, Mayor, because we have, we have our own UMA house.
Well, I'll tell you, the place where you're going to need to get very, very particular training is on the intermunicipal.
Day two, for sure.
And if you don't get that, you're going to miss an important piece.
Well, that becomes part of what's going to happen here by 2019 and we need to be well versed in.
You need to.
But is it not in AUMA right now?
That's right.
That is the AUMA. Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, you decide.
When do we have to know by?
It's pretty soon because if you want to get the $200, otherwise it's jumped up quite significantly.
Yeah, well, I'm planning on going.
Part of AUMA.
But if the, yes, but that probably would go a little bit more in depth. The AUMA would be a 45.
Is that a Thursday and Friday?
That's a Monday, Tuesday, it looks like.
Monday, Tuesday?
Okay.
Mayor, if I could have a chance, I'd also like to ask our administration to contact Brownlee.
He's already done that training last year.
Yeah, but see what their training is this year, if they can elaborate on the intermunicipal.
Okay.
Because they could do a lot better conference than anybody.
Okay. Can I maybe suggest something? You're bringing back a very important point. The intermunicipal that was done by Brownlee, we probably have good notes on that and maybe that is something we could circulate.
Sure, I have the whole session.
Yeah, because that was an important problem.
Now, one thing we have to remember too, that day two is a Tuesday and that's the day that we have council.
Yes, and that's a problem. This is why we can not all go.
But could we ask Jeff if he could contact Brownlee and see what their big conference is going to be involved in?
Yeah, because if Brownlee is going to cover some of these things, then that would satisfy that need for our application.
Yeah, I mean, like I say, the intermunicipal, I have had two training sessions at this point, but you never have too many to be refreshed.
The only other thing I was thinking of is.
Councilor Barnes, can you give Councilor just a chance? Thank you.
So you might have to enlighten the rest of us, Mayor. The Brownlee conference, is that part of AUMA?
No, let me explain to you that's a group of municipal lawyers.
I know Brown, I just wanted.
Who offer every year for all municipalities, a seminar that lasts, what, seven hours?
But it's not part.
It's independent of AUMA, totally independent.
February, March?
Yeah, every, every year, around Valentine Day, around that time.
Yeah, okay.
And it's in Calgary.
Yeah. Okay, so you will make a decision on your own for this one.
The other option is that the Medicine Hat venue is on December the first and second and it's on a Friday and a Saturday, which would interfere with our council.
You want to travel and talk. Okay, so you understand what you need to do. You're interested, contact Jeff. He'll make sure you're registered. Alberta Health meeting at AUMA, that is an opportunity we have to discuss possibly again the hospital issue, bring them up to speed. And I have asked Jeff to contact the administrator of the hospital because I discovered through someone fairly well informed that when the water turned, a fire occurred, they had to remove all patients with pulmonary respiratory problem, all of that hospital because of ventilation, is an external ventilation system sucking in the problem.
She said it was almost worse in the hospital than it was outside the hospital.
I went to the hospital that week to visit someone and I was shocked at the smell of the smoke in that hospital and in those rooms. I was so shocked and that don't have a ventilation system and a cooling system that circulates just inside air. It's always sucks in the air from outside. So that became another issue that we had to deal with in town where patients had to be removed to other hospitals. So it does not make our hospital very, very sustainable at this point if we had any sort of chemical spill or fire smoke inhalation. We couldn't even treat those peoples here. So that's another argument we need to add on to our narrative already well documented. Should we go to 17? Code of Compliance train? Yes.
Can I ask a question on the previous one?
Oh.
I need to submit to Alberta Health tomorrow who's attending and I actually don't recommend that all eight of us go marching in. It's a little overwhelming. I would prefer two, maybe three would be appropriate. It's off-site. It's just a couple of blocks away from the Tels Convention Center. And you also, if you go to this, you miss on what's going on at the convention, you miss the sessions of the convention. But again, it's only for an hour total because we only have a 20-minute time slot. So I would request to know who you might between you want to assign to attend that with me because I have to submit that in the morning.
Okay, I will go as the mayor. It's normally the right position. Councilor Bantry?
I'd suggest Councilor Court, who's gonna be there and then he could confer with his wife because she's right there in the hospital all the time.
Sure, she certainly is. Health and Rowan would like to know.
Okay, so.
It's three.
There are too many though.
No, it's all right.
It's okay. Are you okay, classes, with three hours coming?
Ben.
All right, so Jeff, that's it.
Thank you.
You work well.
Thank you.
I don't work there anymore.
Oh, you don't?
Not the 70th.
You don't have a balance anymore?
All right.
You don't listen to me anymore.
They could, they could have compliance. The Code of Compliance, the Code of Compliance is regarding the electrical regulation. And I will ask Jeff to kind of enlighten us because we were enlightened last council, but new council needs to be enlightened.
So I do not have the most exciting part of your agenda tonight. I'll admit that right up front. In your package, you have a PowerPoint, well, it's a PDF, but a presentation on the Code of Conduct. And this is not related to your council code of conduct in any way. This is a code of conduct mandated under the Alberta Utilities Commission. And I want to speak to that. Now, I'm gonna try and use this as a bit of a quick training for your role with the electrical system the town owns and then into some other things. And then we're gonna talk later about some more complex issues. So to start off, you are the Board of Directors for the Distribution System Utility for the Town of Cardston. So when we enter into agreements, when we work with the government, when we deal with the regulatory framework in the provincial electrical framework, you are considered the Board of Directors for that company. And as such, you have some obligations. And one of them is to comply with the provincial code of conduct for utility companies. Before we get totally into that, I'll just give a little bit of background. We live in a deregulated electrical environment, which to me seems to have more regulation than I can imagine for a deregulated environment. But that's another story. What is really, what's happened is pre-96, you had these fully integrated utilities. The best example is TransAlta. They generated, they transmitted on a large scale, they distributed on a community scale, and they retail. So they were everything, right from the coal-fired generation to turning on your lights at home. And what happened is post-96, they wanted to break that up. And they even took companies such as NMAX who were integrated, and they made them separate out. So now you have NMAX Power, and you have NMAX Energy, and you have NMAX. And they're simply three different entities that do the three different functions, but they're not directly related. So they wanted to break that up so they could introduce competition into the mix, really is what they were trying to do. They wanted the private sector to get in on the generation and on the retail side. That was the goal. And that's what has happened today. So now you have a number of generators. You have small privately-owned generators to massive, huge coal and gas generators. And they're generally private, and they play the power pool. They submit their hourly price for power on the pool depending on demand. It's an absolute massive algorithm that they manage this all on. And so what happened though is some pieces stayed regulated and some were deregulated. So generation is competitive. Retail and marketing is competitive, but the distribution is still regulated. So the infrastructure we own is a distributor in the province of Alberta. We operate in a regulated environment. So we have a ton of regulation that we have to abide by as a distributor. So maybe just to back up a little bit further, we own all the poles and wires that move electricity within the municipal boundary of the Town of Cardston. That is considered our franchise area. And we cannot operate outside of it, and we cannot compete with anyone outside of it, nor are we subject to competition. Okay, so it protects us both ways. We are not subject to any other people coming in unless there was, there are some... We could have an amicable agreement with someone. For example, we have a water plant that sits in the county. We actually supply that because it's our infrastructure, even though it's outside of our franchise area. There's a few little things we've done. But by and large, we work within our franchise area. So what happens is we contract third parties to take care of some services for us. There is a thing that we, we have to provide a number of things for our customers, but we're not really equipped to provide. So we contract NMAX for a number of services. They read our meters for us. They bill for us. They provide what's called a regulated rate option. So every distributor must provide a regulated rate, which is the floating rate. So you have an option to go to a retailer and contract. But if you do not contract with the retailer, you get a default rate that the town provides. But it is regulated, and it's something that we must do. And NMAX manages that for us. So what happened a few years ago is there was concerns, particularly in the retail industry, that communities like ours who contracted NMAX for everything were, had a preference, a competitive advantage, a competitive preference in the community. It seemed as though, the Town of Cardston, to use us as an example, preferred NMAX over other retailers. That was a perception of the customer. That was a concern of competing entities. And so the province has said, okay, we're gonna have fair and efficient and open competition in the retail market. We're gonna ensure that by regulation. So again, a little more regulation in the deregulated market. We're going to regulate that. And what they've done is they put a code of conduct in place which monitors this competitive environment. And I have to, I'm audited as the manager of the electrical distribution system. I'm audited to make sure that my employees, my Board of Directors, and any contractors are compliant. The really, really short story is we cannot show preference to any retailer. That's how it works. So from my front office staff, when people come in the office and say, hey, I've just moved to Cardston, and I need to get hooked up with all the utilities, who should I go with? Our position is NMAX will bill your water, sewer, and garbage, and you have a choice of your electrical retailer and your gas retailer, although we're not as ready with the gas piece. But you have a choice of those other utility retailers. We recommend you do your homework and due diligence and choose one. So we get, here's a very common question we get in the office. Well, if NMAX is already billing the water, sewer, and garbage, shouldn't I just use them then? Wouldn't that be easier? Might be easier, but we're not telling you they're better. We're simply saying you need to do your investigation and choose your retailer based on the details and what's out there. So that's, that's the quick story of it. So the town's obligation is we have to have a compliance officer and a compliance plan, which we have. We post that plan. We can notify the public if they have complaints. So if someone phones the, oh, I just forgot the third-party name. If somebody phones the utility consumer advocate, that's kind of a third-party watchdog in the province, and says, you know, the Town of Cardston, let's say they're, I don't know, picking another retailer in town, and they call and say, Cardston tells everyone to go with NMAX. Well, now I'm investigated, and I have to show our compliance plan and how we intended, the training I gave you as the Board of Directors and all that stuff. And so I submit to audits, and I educate and train employees. And then our conduct with the public is essentially what I told you. So as councillors, as the Board of Directors, your neighbor's gonna ask you, hey, you know, the town owns the distribution system, right? Yep. So how can I get an NMAX bill? Well, you get an NMAX bill because that's who the town contracts to bill, the municipal services, but you can choose whatever retailer you want. You just don't want to come across as saying, you should probably choose NMAX because we contract them for other stuff. Just don't say that is really the end story. And so in the presentation, I had a number of ways that non-compliance could happen. And the other concern is, and we've had this before, is people say, well, if I don't choose NMAX, do I get an inferior level of service? So what if I have a concern with my bill, and I bring it to the town, and I'm not with NMAX, now what? Well, we're not customer service for any of them. That's not our role. Now, between us and everyone that's gonna watch us in the future, do we have a really good direct contact with NMAX for customer service? Yes, it's better than some other companies provide us. But that doesn't mean you can't get the exact same customer service from anyone. And yours, what we deliver, we will not hamper distribution to your home depending on what retailer you have. We don't care. Nothing changes. If you have your power out, and you call us, and we find out you're an Atco Electric customer, we don't wait another hour to come respond. No, it's not, it's not the program. Doesn't matter. It's completely irrelevant to know response. The other thing we get asked a lot is, should I take a contract or should I go with the very, the regulated rate? We don't have an opinion on it. Do your homework, make a decision. We just don't have an opinion. So I've done all this training. Our staff training's a little bit more comprehensive because we deal with all of these questions. But basically, if there is non-compliance, it's reported to me. I'm supposed to investigate it. And then what I have to do on a quarterly basis is I have to provide you with, as councillor, as the Board of Directors, with a compliance report, which is the next item on the agenda. And that report will say, there were no complaints in this quarter related to code of conduct. And you, as a councillor, make a resolution to say, we approve. Well, or if you, if you think I'm not telling you the truth, don't approve it. But I have no reason not to. You, we would approve that report that you've received that as the Board of Directors and as the manager have reported no complaints against our code of conduct. So that's the next item on the agenda. And I'm in contact for that. So there's your very quick code of conduct training. Please do not preference a retailer in any way. Just simply don't. Tell people they can go to the utility consumer advocate and do all kinds of research. They can talk to customer service from any respective retailer, and they can make their decision. But our service as a distributor is not impacted in any way by choice of retailer, ever. And we help people with customer servicing where we can, but generally, we turn them back over to the retailer.
Jeff, here's one question. Because very often, people will start to preface it this way. So who do you have for a retailer right now?
Sure, sure. And at the end of the day, if they ask me, I'd say, well, I go with NMAX just because that was the best offering at the time, but I don't know now.
It's exactly the way, the best way to answer.
Yeah.
To really make sure that, if you go in that way, make sure that it satisfies your needs.
And I get it on a regular basis.
Yes, of course I do.
Yeah.
So it's a tricky question, but it's a question you can be honest and but still qualify the answer with you still need to do your homework.
Now, code of conduct is one very small part of your obligation as a director, Board of Directors of the electrical system. But we're gonna ease into that a little bit at a time as time goes on because there's a lot there, and you'll get very familiar with that. But that's the code of conduct. And again, the next agenda item is gonna request an approval of that code of conduct compliance report.
Okay.
Is it eat low or, well, it's still hot?
I don't think it's hot. I think it's just...
There must be something there, yeah. It smells good.
Okay. Do you, Shem, your item, how long would it be as a presentation?
Do you want it to be...
No, no, but if you give it the short version and still get the information you need.
We should probably do it after the...
We'll do it after? Okay, you want to break at this time? So please go ahead. Put a motion forward.
I move to recess. 10 minutes?
Are we gonna get pictures before we eat, just in case people...
Use the flag for your...
Yes.
Wrap yourself in a flag.
Okay. Could you take a picture at this point?
I'm just looking out for your white shirt.
Photoshop can fix everything.
You're looking out.
You're taking anything off. You're taking about 30 pounds off.
Here is what Shem suggests. Clean everything off.